Good evening, I'll call this meeting of the Cartersville City Council to order. If you'll please stand for our invocation and pledge.
Join me as we pray. Dear gracious Father, Lord, we come to you tonight and just taking on the privilege of being able to come and do the business of the city. And we thank you for that. But also, Lord, we just come to you with heavy hearts, just ask that you would touch, have your healing hand, touch a very dear friend of ours, that you would lift him up, that you would touch his body, that you would heal him. And tonight, I think that not only him, but those that are in our city who may be ailing with things that we don't even know, we ask that you would touch our city with your healing hand tonight. And lift those who are sick in spirit, sick in body, that you would heal them. So tonight, I just come with a special request and cry out to you for that tonight. But go before us and give us wisdom as we make decisions for our city, that you would lead and go before us and guide us in all these decisions tonight. And may we come also with listening ears and open hearts. And it's in your holy name we pray these things. Amen.
Amen. Join me in the pledge of allegiance to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Drake, the roll, please.
Carrie Hyde, Ward 1, here. Jay Step, Ward 2.
Here.
Kerry Roth, Ward 3.
Here.
Calvin Cooley, Ward 4.
Here.
Gary Fox, Ward 5.
Here.
Tac Ren, Ward 6.
So close in so far. First order of business is the approval of the council meeting minutes. We have three of those meetings to approve, our three sets of minutes. One from our August 4th meeting, the second from our first of three hearings on the millage rate on August 11th, and the third from the meeting that was held this morning at 8:00 for that second reading of the millage public hearing. And council now will be the opportunity to make any edits to those minutes. If there are none to be had, a motion would be in order.
I make a motion to approve the minutes from August 4th, August 11th, and August 18th.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
And those sets of minutes are all approved unanimously. We do have a set of public hearings tonight. As I mentioned, this will be the third reading of the city Cartersville MNO millage rate set at 2.910 mills for 2022. And as you do know, the millage rate remains flat. The digest has grown. We did not roll back because the city's growing, and we feel like that's what we've done in years past, and that's the right thing to do for our citizens. I'll also point out that again, as the state of Georgia can take in $5 billion a year in revenue and just say, hey, we had a good year, if cities or counties take in one penny more than they did in the previous year, it has to be labeled as a tax increase, and then we are set to have meetings like this. So that being said, I will open up the floor. This is the third public hearing for the city of Cartersville MNO millage rate that is currently set at 2.910 mills. Anybody wishing to step forward and speak for or against may do so at this time. And when doing so, if you do, if you'll please give your name and your address for our clerk to have it in our minutes. And seeing none, I will close the public hearing relative to the city of Cartersville MNO millage rate, and I will turn it over to council for consideration. Mr. Mayor, if you don't mind, I would like to just kind of share some information to the public and those on watching at home. Essentially, just some information generally, if your home is assessed at $500,000, you have homestead exemption, you're only taxed at $200,000. The rollback rate would have been 2.589 mills. The rate proposed to this council is 2.91. That's $582 on that $500,000 assessed value. If you divide that over 365 days at $582, it's $1.59 per day. Here's what you get for that $500,000 value. I guess, well, first of all, the proposed millage rate comparison to us and other neighboring cities. Marietta is at 2.788. Of course, we're looking at 2.91. Calhoun's at 3.2. And then you jump up to 5.6. Woodstock, Rome goes 8, as well as Kennesaw and Acworth at 8.9. Comparisons between us and Marietta, we're about the same square miles, about 23 square miles for us. You can see where Marietta at 2.78, it's $14 million in their proper taxes. Us, we're getting 4.8 million that we're using for our budget here in Cartersville for a same-sized city square miles-wise. Now, population-wise, they're much larger than us, but again, density, or square miles-wise, they're the same size. Calhoun's actually half of our square miles, and they're at slightly higher millage rate. That's one comparison. But every day, if you go to the next slide, you can see what you get for that, basically $1.59 at that $500,000 value. Not everybody's taxed, it's based on their assessed value. What you get coming out of the general fund, you get Downtown Development Authority, we, the city funds that. So you have downtown events, you have public works, streets, sidewalks that we provide every day. Airport, we fund. Police and fire get those services. Hopefully, you never need them, but they're on call 24/7. And you know, the county provides an ambulance service. Most of the time, our fire department, if it's an accident within the city, arrive first and provide EMT services that we provide for that. You get building inspection, so new developments coming through, our building inspection departments provide that. Goodyear Clubhouse, one of the rentals we have, we've spent money on to help develop that. Parks, we've got large trail system throughout our community. And then public works, again, you know, doing streets, road maintenance, street cleaning. So these are a number of things I just want to point out to the public, to the council, that we do as part of the annual budget process. We try to be as efficient and effective as possible. So again, for a house that's valued at $500,000, for $1.59 a day, I would say it's a pretty good deal for where our millage rate is set at. So Mayor and council, I would recommend approval of this millage rate at 2.91. All right. So if there's no other discussion?
I'd like to make a motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. The next item is Cartersville Business Improvement District Millage Rate Set at 1.12 mills for the upcoming year. This is a self-imposed tax on either, on 51, at least 51% of the population, of the owners, or 51% of the value of downtown. This is a restricted money that, again, the majority of the people that live in the downtown, the Business Improvement District, the downtown area, choose to have this taken, this additional tax so that they can, that money's used for facade grants for the downtown buildings or for basically beautification projects like the, you see the picture there that has the artificial turf that's recently been put in the downtown depot area, garbage cans and other kind of beautification projects. It's also available to residents or buildings that are downtown, that are residential in nature. So that being said, I'll open up the public hearing for the Cartersville Business Improvement District Millage for 1.120 mills for 2022. And again, anybody wishing to step forward, speak for or against, may do so at this time. And seeing none, I'll close the public hearing for the Cartersville Business Improvement District Millage Rate and turn it over to council for consideration.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Next item is the Parks Bond Property Tax Millage Rate Set at 0.624 mills for 2022. This was a resident-approved bond issue that went back about eight years now, where money was given for recreation upgrades, which many of you have seen, if you are around with our parks, built some, upgraded some bathrooms, did a lot of work at Dillinger Park and throughout the city, quite honestly. And this is just the annual, I guess, paying back of those bonds. And again, it's set for 0.624. And I'll open up a public hearing for that millage rate and ask anybody wishing to speak for or against to step forward and do so at this time.
Thank you, Mayor Santini. My name is Mike Lusk. I live at 4 Twin Leaf Court in Cartersville. This is only a question. Thanks for bringing up the last two millage rates we just talked about, about the Downtown Development Authority and the Parks and Rec Park. My question, it's just a straight-up question because I've never had asked this. Is the funding that we see in that, that tax, is that in addition to a base tax that perhaps, I'll use for example, the downtown area is already part of the city? Is this, do they get additional funds over and above what this millage rate brings?
Do they get additional funds?
In other words, do they have a base rate that everybody else outside the downtown Business Authority, they, you know, they pay taxes at a certain rate? And then is that kind of the foundation for those that are in the business district? And then layer on top of that, this additional millage?
This additional millage is used specifically for, it's a limited fund that's put, it's put into a fund that is specifically for downtown building improvements. There's a grant program that you can, that you qualify for or for beautification, like I said, benches, garbage cans, and other improvements that the DDA feels is necessary.
But the regular basic stuff they have, paved in the streets and then things that everybody else has, they are, that's part of their base.
That's not a function of the Downtown Development Authority.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else with questions or comments about the Geo Parks and Recreation Property Tax Millage may step forward at this time. And seeing none, I will close the public hearing for the Geo Parks and Recreation Property Tax Millage of .624 and turn it over to council for consideration. So Mayor, again, I would like to just point out, as you kind of alluded to, this has been going on for several years, but just as a reminder to the public, we want to thank you for that, and we have spent your money wisely. At Dillinger Park, we had obviously a new recommendation, record department admin building, a couple restroom facilities there, improvements that were needed at Dillinger Park. Recently, we just completed the gazebo update, some new water fountains going on out there, and some other park improvements at Dillinger Park. And that was just one phase of that. And we tried, and we had pavilion improvements, and we tried to stretch those dollars as much as we could with any grant money we were able to find to match those dollars. At Deerfield and Hicks and Sports Complex, we had some more restroom facilities out there, as well as the update to the fence and parking lot at Deerfield. So those are some of the things, some of the improvements we spent that money on. And we do appreciate the public seeing the need down years ago, but we did put forth good effort, went through a recreation committee, advisory committee, to help us determine how architect, engineers, and hire builders to do all this. Basically, the money's been spent, we spent it wisely, and I just want to remind the public of that as paying off these bonds for the last couple of years for the $8 million that was borrowed several years ago. Thank you, sir.
To echo that, that was something that, when we did that now eight years ago, and it's a 10-year, no, 10, is that right?
Yes, sir.
So with full intent, because I think the community asked, are you, will you ever roll that off when it's done? And that's the full intent, that in two years, that would be paid off and it'll roll off. So you would see your property tax actually, that would go away.
Any other questions or comments? Nothing else needs to be said, a motion's in order.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. I'll chime in here before we turn over, because that concludes the MNO side of things. I want to thank Dan and the entire city staff, and I don't have all of our department heads here, but whether or not you're a revenue generating department or one that relies on revenue to be generated to operate your department, it is commonplace and sometimes almost overlooked a little bit, the amount of times where there's things that are budgeted that come in under budget, or a piece of equipment that's being replaced that has gone beyond all kinds of its useful life. You know, we're not replacing things after five years. Sometimes we're replacing things, I think we replaced a truck in one of the departments that was, was about 20 years old just a few weeks ago. So again, I think there is a mindset, not just amongst council, but amongst every single person that's looking after tax dollars in our, in our city, that looking to stretch those pennies and use them wisely. And again, I want to thank every, all the staff that is here, and obviously those that aren't as well, for using that and having that mindset of consideration of trying to get the most out of every single dollar. It's appreciated. I will move on to the Cartersville School System. By the way, I'm sure the same could be said for our school system as well, and we will move on to the Cartersville School System Millage Rate that is set at 13.96 mills for 2022. And I'll open up a public hearing for that and ask anybody wishing to step forward, to speak for or against, to do so at this time. And again, sir, if you, when you do step forward, if you please give your name and your address for our clerk, and our members of the school board here, I think all of them are here just about, and so they may choose to address that, or we'll just see.
Okay. My name is Raleigh Chastain. I live at 107 12 Oaks Drive. The Reserve at Pettit Creek, if you will, is where I'm presently located. And what I would like to do is, I do have copies, if you would like a copy, but I would like to talk with you very briefly regarding, an appeal to you regarding the lowering of the proposed school taxes. What we have, this request for the Cartersville City Council is to help provide tax support to their citizens in the form of lowering the proposed Cartersville City School Taxes. As a senior resident, I am currently at a disadvantage in matters pertaining to the Cartersville City School Board and their constant raising of our school budgets. At every request for a tax increase, they are putting their school concerns over the welfare of the rest of the city citizens, especially the seniors, and that's what I'm going to address right here. Let me explain my situation. I am retired, and I live in a relatively new subdivision, the Reserve at Pettit Creek. It's about five years old. In 2017, my tax bill was $2,957 because I did not have homestead exemption. I moved here from Gwinnett County. And in, with that bill, on a taxable value which was $99,160 with no homestead exemption. In 2018, it was $2592 on a value of $77,578 because we had the $28,000 homestead exemption. So my taxes were lowered because of that homestead exemption. In 2019, it went up to $2750 with a, with a $2,609 in 2020. So thanks to the increase in the exemptions in 2020, the 2021 taxes dropped to $2,022. Okay? So I'm sitting basically at $2,000 in 2021. So right now, the proposed taxes for 2022 now have my taxes at $3,060. So I have an extra $1,000, which I realize you have all of these things that you're paying for and you have to pay for. Everybody's stuck in this increase that we're presently having, but when you're a senior on a fixed income, $1,000 is a lot of money. So with that, the school taxes went from $677 to $1,208, almost a 100% increase. Now, some people think all of this is because of the $100,000 increase in value. Oh, your home went up $100,000, you're rich, okay? So instead of $300,000, your home's now worth $400,000. The problem is, that is not cash in hand. That is on paper. We all know that, and you can't spend paper money. Okay? And when I say that, I'm saying just because your house is valued more does not allow you to go out and increase your spending. It's just on paper, and you never see that in your pocket until you sell. So with that, I contend that my social security hasn't increased the amount that the city and the schools are raising their taxes, and it gives me no cash on hand. Inflation's out of control, and everything now costs about 15%. Okay, 15%. My taxes went up 33. So if the city school board were located in space, they would be the known as the mother of all black holes, because we're throwing money into the school board, and what's happened is it just keeps sucking money down and sucking money down. And with a fixed income, I don't have more money to throw at the school board. Therefore, I propose that the Cartersville senior citizens that are over 65, that the city council come in and put a valuation freeze on our houses based on the 2021 value. So I'm not saying I'm not going to pay school taxes. There's a big controversy over that today, if you know that. But the problem is, is I am being taxed out of the house that I bought for retirement in this city. So doing so would allow the Cartersville City School Tax to get an increase from those households that still have working people that are not retired, and it would also give some relief to those seniors who have retired and are not getting yearly salary increases. Those seniors over 65 would still be paying taxes, just like it would just be the rate for 2021. So anything that you can do to help the seniors get some tax relief would be greatly appreciated. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, sir. Anybody from the school board have comment on that? Sir, I will simply say, just to clarify, I understand the valuations have gone up. That is, and to say that to freeze values and do one, the entire valuation process is done through the county tax assessor's office, so it's not something that's under our control. We don't, we don't have anything to do with the valuations, nor do we talk with the tax assessor's office. I will tell you, and I mentioned this at our first hearing, I'd like to see about five mills taken away from everybody in the city's taxes, but the issue that comes there is about $6.6 million in school taxes that we pay gets sent down to the state to be used in other communities. That equals about five of this, very low, 13.906 millage rate, five of those mills goes towards state equalization payments, so Cartersville taxpayers are paying money down to the state that's being used in other places. To me, that's a more, it's more infuriating than, than anything else. But I did want to make sure that I mentioned that to you, and again, the millage rate, I understand your plight, and I just want to make sure I got those points across.
I understand, and we will carry forward to the, to the county and see what we can do. The problem I have is, I've addressed this to the city school, they've increased their tax, okay? The evaluation went up, they get more money because of that, but what's happened, regardless of how you cut it, I still have at least $50 a month in school taxes coming out of my pocket, coming out of my social security, coming out of my grocery bill, coming out of my gas bill. All of you are faced with that. And if you have no control over the city school, then why even address this in public? We have no recourse. This is a city school board. I respect those people, don't get me wrong. I respect them, they respect the job. The problem is, they don't open their eyes and look at the other citizens that they are supposed to be serving.
I would, I would say that, and again, the taxpayers did it, when it was spearheaded by the school system, that there was senior tax relief, that I believe anybody that has a house that's valued at about $240,000 doesn't pay school taxes at all because of that exemption. So there was an effort made, at least in my mind, to, and again, it was, it was spearheaded by both the city and the, and the city school system. They came up with the formula, and the taxpayers, I mean, the people put on a ballot, and by and large, the community wanted it. So there has been work done to do that. And again, I would also say relative, we don't have a graphic, but relative to other millage rates of school systems in surrounding areas, I mean, it's a basis for comparison, whether, you know, if you like that basis or not, 13.906 is very low comparative to surrounding communities and most other places, at least in North Georgia.
Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else wish to step forward and make comment relative to the Cartersville School System Millage Rate? They do so at this time. Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing, turn it over to council.
Man, I'd like to, I'm sort of going to put David on the spot here, but a little bit, sir, to address, one of the things that you said is, why are we doing this? Why are we in this room, right? You know, obviously, the school board's elected, and they have to set their own millage, but ultimately, it comes back to us. And when I was first coming on council 14, 15 years ago, I, you know, people would show up and want to voice their opinion to us in regards to the school millage. David, if you don't mind elaborating on that, but ultimately, it, this, the vote that happened across the way weeks ago was the final vote. We, by law...
Yeah. Our charter provides that the school board will set the millage rate to operate the school system, that that will then be submitted to the city council, who is mandated to approve the millage rate set by the school board.
So if I get my mind...
Yeah, you can step forward, yes, if you've got another question.
No, I just wanted to understand, if you don't mind.
So right there, what you're saying is, they're self-regulating, they set their millage rate, and they, they set what they think their budget should be, because they're self-regulating, and then they recommend you, that to you, and you are mandated to approve that, and you cannot discuss any details or reducing it or having any control over that? Is that correct?
That's what the charter's written.
Then I would again say, I understand, I respect you people for the jobs that you do, thank you very much, but I would still say, then this hearing has no function, because if the school board is self-regulating and approve their own budgets and do not take into consideration the needs of seniors and other people that have, do not have the money but are being taxed out, and you have no say-so over it, then there's no reason to have a school board hearing in here, because the school board is not going to change. They, they are not self-regulating.
The reason we have this hearing is that state law requires it.
I understand, but thank you. I appreciate it.
Thank you, sir.
And man, not to just keep on, but the school board is in here, guys, and, you know, and to me, I think they do a fabulous job. So that in no way was me trying to say, hey, don't yell at me, yell at these guys. But, you know, they held their meetings, they're elected officials just like us, and they, they do the very best that they possibly can with, you know, with what they're given. So, but I knew that you had sort of alluded to that, so I wanted to make sure that, it was tricky for me originally, too. So to understand that our charter and our state and what we are required, I just wanted to make that clear for you.
Okay.
Matt, if you're ready, I'd like to make a motion.
Unless there's any other discussion?
Yeah. Make a motion to approve.
All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. We'll move on to appointments for the Historic Preservation Commission. Mr. Porter.
Yes, Mayor, the Brad Galvin and Greg Feskey are currently serving on the HBC and would like to continue to serve through that time, the next, if approved, their term will expire September 7th of 2025.
Thank you. Questions, comments, or motions?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed? Motion carries unanimously. I have a point to the Etowah Area Consolidated Housing Authority.
Yes, Ms. Hazel Stevenson has stepped down from the housing authority, and Mr. Cooley has recommended Ty Mitchum. He'd like to serve on that authority if approved, and his term would end on April 1st, 2026.
Thank you. Any discussion? If there's none, a motion is in order. Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Mr. Porter, if you'll tell us about the local option sales tax agreement.
Yes, Mayor, the local option sales tax agreement formally kind of, acronym is lost. Basically, that's set by the census every 10 years, and for the past several decades, when the census was set, it's always been split according to population. This time around, we've sat down with the county and the other cities within the county and have negotiated an amount a little more favorable to the city of Cartersville. Under the new census, we would have gone from 19.3% to 21.292%, but after some negotiation, we were able to go to 22.75% if approved by the city council. This would go into effect of January 1st, 2023. It also would go into effect... It also would go in effect, would be in effect if we have another SPOSS referendum in 2026. But I ask for your approval of this ten-year agreement to the new lost amount for the city of Cartersville, twenty-two point seven-five percent.
And other cities have had meetings prior to this and approved this. I do want to thank those other cities. Thank you to Councilman Fox and, and Dan for representing the city along with me and trying to negotiate this. I think we ended up in a good place, but it also took the leadership and generosity of the county to get us where we needed to be, and also a spirit among all the other cities that we wanted to do what was best for everybody. So the cities and the county worked together to get these numbers done, and try to keep everything as equitable and fair as possible. And, so again, couldn't happen without a collaborative spirit. So I appreciate everybody in those, that was else that worked on that, to make that happen. So, that being said, Chair will entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Hold favor to Kate by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Mr. Dooley, you have the next item, please, sir.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Let's see, thirty-two and circle, we have an interconnection agreement. We need to get approval from council for the mayor and clerk to put a signature on. The customer there has installed solar panels on their roof to help them alleviate some of their power cost as much as they can. That ultimately gets interconnected on the city grid, and we have to have this agreement signed that allows us, for them to interconnect with us, and us to be able to pay them back if they ever push power back on the grid.
Okay.
Just asking for that.
Any questions for John on this? If there are none, a motion's in order.
Motion to approve.
I'll second.
Hold favor to Kate by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Continue on, please.
The next one, Piana Unwovens, a local industry in town, they are, done the exact same thing as thirty-two and circle. They've taken advantage and put rooftop solar panels on top of their building. Exact same situation, just need the interconnection agreement, approval for the mayor and clerk to sign the interconnection agreements for that.
Questions for John on this? If there's no discussion, a motion's in order. Motion to approve.
Second.
Hold favor to Kate by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, John.
Thank you.
Mr. Forsyth, you are up, sir.
Yes, good evening, Mayor and Council. The first item is renewal of a engineering services agreement with Switzer Engineering. This is necessary in order to complete some of the projects that we have to do with them. It has been reviewed and approved by the city attorney's office. We're requesting that the mayor have permission to sign that agreement. In addition to that agreement, there is also a task order from Switzer Engineering for designing a waterline relocation along Grassdale Road from Castle Road to Highway forty-one, in conjunction with the, the road project going on there, for fifteen thousand dollars. That is a budgeted item. Recommend your approval for both of those items to be signed.
Okay. Thank you. Any questions for Sidney on this item? If there are none, a motion is in order.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Hold favor to Kate by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Continue on, please, Sidney.
Yes, and the next item is an industry at, in Industrial Park Road. They are actually a sewer generating industry, therefore, we have to meter their sewage. And that's what this installation is for. We, we accepted bids for the installation of that. It requires a vault, and it's a six-inch meter, so it's relatively large, and requires excavation and installation, and tying into their sewer service line. The low bid for that was Lanning Contracting for thirteen thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars. Recommend your approval for that work.
Thank you. Questions, comments, or motions?
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Hold favor to Kate by saying aye?
Aye.
And the motion carries unanimously.
Yes, sir, the final item is, is the same project, the, the industry on Industrial Park Road. This is actually the purchase of the vault and piping material to install from our supplier of Ford Line Water Works for fourteen thousand, twenty-four dollars. And I, and I might add to both of these, these are both reimbursable to the city by the customer. They are aware of this, and have agreed to it. Recommend your approval there.
Great. Questions, comments, or motions?
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Hold favor to Kate by saying aye?
Aye.
The motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Sidney. The next item, which is the Water Guard Replacement Camera System, that's going to be removed from the agenda. We'll move on to Mr. Morgan, and just, but as you're making your way up, I'm going to entertain a motion to add five items to the agenda tonight.
Same move.
Second.
Hold favor to Kate by saying aye?
Aye.
Five items added. Good evening, Mr. Morgan.
Good evening. Good evening, Mayor and Council. I bring before you a request to approve two vehicle purchases that were budgeted, one for the planning zoning department, and one for parks and recreation. We had a couple of different bids. We chose the lower of those, or the best bid, but also, they got us the, both vehicles at a shorter timeframe. So requesting approval for the purchase of both of these vehicles.
Okay. Thank you. Any discussion on this item?
No.
All right, all right. Okay. If there's no discussion, a motion's in order.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Hold favor to Kate by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Porter, you got the next item?
Yes, Mayor, United Healthcare Senior Supplement for our retirees, the renewal effective January one of 2023, the premium increase is going to be slightly over a couple percent for the, that coverage from three forty-two, fifty-three per month to three fifty-one, oh nine, but that is the best coverage out there for our retirees covered under the plan, and I recommend that for your approval.
Any questions for Dan on this item?
Dan, how many people are still on that plan?
It's probably between a hundred and ten, a hundred and twenty retirees that are under that, and their spouses.
Good?
Yeah.
All right. Any other questions or discussion? If not, a motion's in order.
Motion to approve. Second.
Hold favor to Kate by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Freddie, you're back up. I don't know why Dan did that to you. Can you get your steps in today?
Bring before you the second quarter of motorway invoice for the county radio system. It is broken out and paid back by the department. We're requesting approval to pay this second quarter invoice from them. Send the amount of thirty-eight thousand, two hundred and fifty-nine dollars and eighty-one cents.
Thank you. Any other questions on this item? If there's none, a motion's in order.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Hold favor to Kate by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. We got some surplus equipment.
Yes, sir. We're requesting approval to, to put these items on gov deals and/or dispose of them properly, but we need your approval to do so.
What are we disposing of?
It is six items. I've got a listing here. There are a couple of different items, one's a generator, some is surplus shop equipment, three other vehicles that are either with age or with mileage that we're looking to dispose of, so those be placed on gov deals.
Thank you. I just figured if there was somebody else interested like I was.
Okay.
If there's any other questions, if not, a motion's in order.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Hold favor to Kate by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
We'll move on to those items added before we get with the finance report. I'll ask Chief Candice to step forward, please, for that first item. Hello, Chief.
Good evening. So each year, the Department of Justice requires us to do a federal annual report, which accounts for federal asset forfeiture funds that we received during last fiscal year and that we spent. We received two ninety-seven, eight eighty-two, forty-two, and we spent ninety-one thousand, four eighty, forty. I'm requesting that the council authorize the mayor to sign the federal annual report so it can be submitted by September first, 2022.
Is that kind of the electronic signature?
I can say that as well.
I don't know, is it required?
Yeah. You give your authority to sign it, yeah.
He's going to use the electronic signature. Does that matter? Does that have to be?
I'm sorry, what?
It's electronic signature as long, as long as the mayor's approved of signing it, it doesn't matter.
Oh, yeah.
Well, I didn't know if it needed to be included in there.
Okay.
Never mind. Just want to make sure.
Yes, sir.
We got everything.
I understand the question.
All right. Well, if that's the case, if there's any discussion, you can have it now. If not, you can throw a motion out there.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Hold favor to Kate by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Mr. Archer, you have the next four items.
Yeah, the first three of those, you can, I think you can vote on altogether, but we have a city officer that was involved in an automobile accident. There's a, a law firm in Atlanta, Harden Associates, that sent the city a, what's called an anti-litem notice, which is setting out their version of the facts, and asserting a claim against the city on behalf of a Thomas Sanchez, Latisha Montiel, and Brayden Ray, who is a minor. We have investigated, the police department has investigated, have evidence that the police officers of the city was not at fault, and so I would recommend that you sign a resolution denying the claim. For all three, you can do that in one motion.
Okay. Thank you. Is there any discussion? If not, if council is so inclined to make a motion that would deny all three of those anti-litem claims, or you can do them individually, however you choose.
Make a motion to deny all three of the said anti-litem claims.
Second.
Got a motion to second. Hold favor to Kate by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
We have an anti-litem notice from the Evans Law Firm on behalf of property owners, Jack House, Myrtle Shook, Donovan, and Tracy Shook. And this involves construction activity on behalf of, of the school system for the new primary school at Carter Grove that's up on the mountain. Apparently, the contractor and/or the subcontractor allowed silt, mud to run downhill into the creek that goes through the Shook's property and Jack House's property. We have notified the insurance company that covers the city. The school board has notified the insurance company that insures the school board, and also notified the, the contractor, subcontractor, who would, if, if there was a breach of duty, it would have been there, if I will. So I would recommend, and I've prepared a resolution for you to deny that claim.
Okay. So we're denying the claim, or we approving a resolution to deny the claim? Or does it matter how you? I always want to make sure the wording's correct.
You can do it both.
Okay. Thank you.
Is that good enough?
Sure. All right. Is there any discussion? If not, a motion's in order.
Motion to approve the resolution that denies the claim.
Thank you.
Second.
All in favor to Kate by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Thought I was trying to make it simple. I guess I meant it difficult. Mr. Reinhardt, give us the good news. Or just the news. Go ahead.
It's Thursday evening, that's good news, isn't it?
No pressure.
I don't know, Mayor and Council, we're going to be looking at the June two thousand twenty-two and comparing to June two thousand twenty-one. Keep in mind that this is our end of fiscal year. The reports that I'm giving you are on a cash basis. As the year-end process gets through the completion process, these numbers will change, and the changes are due to the modified accrual method of accounting, which basically takes into consideration things like depreciation expense, bond accruals, accrued revenues, and fixed assets. In the general fund, revenues increased over last year by two point six one million dollars, I'm sorry, two point six million dollars. Expenses increased by three point nine million dollars. The areas of revenue I look at in the general fund on a monthly basis are the local option sales tax have an increase there of about one point one million dollars. Wheel impairments and inspection fees have an increase there of about four hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Water and sewer fund, revenues increased over last year by two point nine million dollars. Expenses decreased by about ten million dollars. This is due to increased personnel expenses, increased operating expenses, decreased debt service expenses, decreased capital expenses, and increased transfers to the general fund. In the gas fund, revenues increased over last June by twelve point six million dollars. Expenses increased by eleven point four million dollars. This is due to increased personnel expenses, increased operating expenses, increased cost of purchase gas, decreased capital expenses, and decreased debt service expenses. In the electric fund, revenues increased over last year by six point eight million dollars. Expenses increased by five point one million dollars. This is due to increased personnel expenses, increased operating expenses, increased cost of purchase electricity, increased capital expenses, and increased transfers to the general fund. In the stormwater fund, revenues decreased over last June by seventy-two thousand dollars. Expenses decreased by two hundred and eighty-two thousand dollars. This is due to increased personnel expenses, decreased operating expenses, and decreased capital expenses. Solid waste fund, revenues increased over last June by three hundred and sixty-eight thousand dollars. Expenses increased by three, thirty-four thousand dollars. This is due to decreased personal expenses, increased operating expenses, and decreased capital expenses. And finally, in the fiber optics fund, revenues increased over last June by a hundred and forty-one thousand dollars. Expenses increased by three hundred and nine thousand dollars. This is due to increased personnel expenses, increased operating expenses, decreased debt service expenses, and decreased cap, capital expenses. In our cash position for the month of June, total unrestricted cash balances decreased slightly, total restricted cash balances also decreased. In the SPOSS account balances for the month of June, SPOSS two thousand and three has a balance of fifty-seven thousand, three hundred and sixty dollars and twenty-two cents. SPOSS two thousand and fourteen has a balance of two hundred and thirty-one thousand, nine hundred and ninety-one dollars and ten cents. SPOSS two thousand and twenty balances five million, nine hundred and thirty-six thousand, eight hundred and ninety-one dollars and twelve cents.
Thank you. Questions or comments?
Uh, just Mayor, as Tom alluded to, this is on a cash basis, so once the order gets done, there will be some accruals made and adjustments on some of these numbers go down. Obviously, the general fund, again, and in a positive note, there were some expenditures that you approved at the end of fiscal year, one, the elevator outside, which is the thirty-five year old building, but it's about a hundred thousand dollars that you approved that's, you know, took out of that funding there, were prepaid for that cost. There's some other expenses that we had that we anticipate during the year, a roof over the history museum, but we still ended the year fairly well. We are trying to build the cash reserve in all the funds, because again, we have to be prepared for rainy day activity. If anything happened that was catastrophic in the city, we need to have the funds available, but appreciate Tom's help and all the departments to make it a good year for the city last year.
And just a note, I know most of the people here probably took that elevator up. That is not the fixed version of the elevator. You could probably agree, if you've ridden that thing, that is in need of repair. It's probably the world's slowest elevator. And take the stairs like I do, it's faster. I'll also point out that, you know, the two larger funds that Tom had mentioned, you know, expenses increasing in the gas department over last year by about eleven point four million, eleven point five million of that is the cost of the purchased gas. So, again, it's just simply a product of that. And the same thing in the electric fund, where expenses increased by a little bit over five million dollars, four point four of that is basically just what we purchase and resell. Certainly, we like it when those costs are lower, because that margin stays the same, which means everybody's bills go down, go down along with it. So, just thought that was of worth note, if anybody saw that those expenses increased. Any other question or comment?
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Is there any business that needs to come before council this evening? And again, anybody wishing to step forward may do so, and again, please, your name and your, and your address. Take your time, that's fine. Just get up here safely, that's all we ask.
Hi, my name is Kate Conway. My address is nineteen Akron Street, Cartersville, Georgia. I wanted to bring up a situation that we're having in historic Atco. Right now, it is my personal belief that we need some improvement from the code enforcement officers. We as a community, I actually have a bunch of my neighbors here tonight as well, we as a community are starting to notice that code enforcement is doing retaliation towards...
I'm going to hold you up right there. If there's an address, if there's an issue of, of a situation that needs to be addressed that's not relative, I don't think it's really fair for anybody to say that there's retaliation or that, I'm not, I just can't have you make an accusation of city staff. I'm just, that's not part of these comments.
God, understood.
If you'll let us know what you're experiencing from a services provided need area, then Council can process that, work with Dan to make sure that those services are provided, so.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Then I will go ahead and recant and kind of pull back. We would really like some improvement made in the neighborhood itself. What we're noticing is just there are some certain codes that are going, if we make complaints, they're not moving forward in a timely fashion.
And I'm not, not trying to interrupt you.
No, you're fine.
Sorry, apologize for, I would only understand, what is, can you give me some examples of those codes that you feel are not being enforced stringently?
Yes, absolutely. As of right now, we have broken glass in the alleyways. We have a boat parked on a main thoroughfare. We have cracked sidewalks. We have water heater on a back deck. We have a refrigerator in a front yard. We have unmoaned grass. Right now, we're having oak trees that are cracking through the sidewalks as well as falling limbs. They're damaging vehicles as well as houses. The list kind of goes on and on. We would just like to see some improvement in these areas. We've also seen there's some leniency towards those that are rental properties versus home-owned properties, and whenever construction seems to be done, there are, you know, there's a lack of building permits and that kind of item. But I will kind of, this is my first time I get nervous speaking in front of public. I'm a new homeowner, and I'm just seeing a lot of items that need to be improved as so far as code enforcement is concerned. That's my personal opinion.
I do have a question about the trees.
Yes.
The trees that have limbs falling.
Yes.
Are those sitting, are they on, sitting on city right-of-way?
Yes.
Are they in people's yards?
Yes, city right-of-way.
Okay.
The beauty strip, I think, is the term for it.
Okay.
But I wanted to make this brief and kind of open it up for others to speak. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else wishing to step forward and speak, may do so at this time.
My name's Leslie Crawford. I live in Atco as well, on 25 Litchfield Street. And thank you for allowing me to speak, and I really appreciate the job y'all do. She did bring up some codes, and there are some that we were really having a difficult time with, and a lot of them involve parking. And I actually have code numbers and everything, but oftentimes, we're getting contradicting information, like, oh, no, that's okay. We don't honor that. But one of the codes, just to bring up, is single-family parking, two per household, and that is code 17628. It does make a difference in a...
Sorry, can you give me that number again, please?
It's 17628.
Thank you.
And I know why we have that code. It's often occurs in these small type communities that are high density. The homes are small, the parking spaces in front of them are small, and one of the excuses we've gotten is, well, people drive work vehicles home. That's great. It counts as one of their vehicles. What happens is homeowners around them end up having to park way down the street, and it is code, and we would ask it's followed. One of the other ones is, we have a lot of non-operational vehicles in the neighborhood, and that's dealt with in Section 14, 22 through 24. One of the things code has told us is that it's okay, as long as it's licensed and tagged. And that's not really how code reads. If it's not operational, it's not supposed to be there, and we've got cars that don't move for years at a time. And it's simple things like that that would beautify that area, and we just ask that those get recognized. But she did mention the boat, and we've got a huge issue with that because I actually asked, perhaps we should do a traffic study. It's a very difficult intersection. It's at the Goodyear headed out towards Castville Road where Parmenter crosses over. There's a boat parked at 19. It's a difficult corner to see around. I've slammed on my brakes many a time, and so have my friends.
Again, I'm just trying to get more, is that a two-way street, or is that one of the one-way streets out there?
Parmenter is two ways, and so is Goodyear.
Okay. So if you're, that boat's in the road, you're having to go to the opposite side of the road to just round it, basically?
Well, there is parking allowed on that, as you turn right on the right side of the road all the way down Parmenter. You have to yield to the two-way traffic, but the boat is large. And I will say, I know this because several years back, there was this, what do they call them, ski jets parked on Litchfield. And me, as well as some other neighbors turned it in, and it was said, that's, it can't park there. We have been told by law enforcement, oh, it's okay. There's a size limit. It's undersized. It is larger than a ski, uh, ski jet, and it's also, you, you cannot see around it. It's dangerous. It's been there going on three months. It's on Google Maps. It got photographed as part of Google Maps, and I photographed it, but it's, it, it's a simple cleanup. And I guess the thing is, and we've also turned in some code problems with, all rental properties are vacant properties. I used to get updates on things that we turned in. We were recently told by code enforcement officer, it's none of our business. There is no timeframe, yet some of us in the group have been cited, and we've had very strict timeframes, and we've also had, we've been told our identities can't remain anonymous, which I can accept to a degree, but I would actually think it was somewhat a protective thing. We have worked with the police department and met with them because we do have ongoing drug issues, and they've been fairly receptive, and we are happy there are some improvements occurring, and we're proud of those. We're gonna keep on fighting. We love Atco. It's a little bit of, you're a redheaded stepchild, but we love it.
I disagree with that assessment, but I understand. I will say, and again, this goes back to the unmooned grass situation, and I know you've been very active in trying to improve the community and been very active in working with our code enforcement people.
Yes.
Well, at least very active in turning things into code enforcement. But relative to the process of, again, I use the example with code enforcement, it's not, it's not a fast process. For instance, if somebody has grass in their yard that's up to, you know, your knees, and there's, say there's rats and mosquitoes everywhere this time of year while the grass is growing, and you turn it into the city, well, our code enforcement people are gonna go out there, they're gonna cite the people that live out there. They've got 30 days to comply.
Yes.
If they don't comply in those 30 days, they get sent to city court, which could take 30 days.
Mm-hmm.
If they go to city court, the judge is probably gonna give them 30 days. So now we're at 90 days, and that grass that was up to your knees is now above your waist, and so I understand the frustration of it. It's not a situation to where most of the code enforcement situations can be swiftly rectified because it is a legal process.
And we understand that. We really do. In fact, we don't, we haven't turned in grass growing, but we've turned in some really, honestly, pretty serious overt property abuse. And when I say property abuse, I mean trash piled to an unsanitary level, rotted wood, you know? And some of that, yeah, a lot of it has been taken care of it. Some of it has taken longer than we would like, and a lot of times, we do get an excuse. And I'm right with this guy back here about senior citizens and property taxes. I understand. It is a process of growth, and Cartersville is a good city and growing. But we get told a lot of times, code enforcement's too busy, and perhaps there needs to be a little more dollars or something towards code enforcement? Because as I understand it, there's only two officers, and we are a growing city. So, I just, I believe Atco could come a lot better. And where I got the Atco as a redheaded stepchild, I attended the reunion in this new, what do you call it?
The Atco Clubhouse.
It was beautiful. I commend y'all for that. It was, and it was a very lovely reunion. I will tell you, a lot of the old timers would say, we've always been the redheaded stepchild. I heard that so many times, and I was just referring to that a little bit jokingly. But I just, you know, I just want to plead with y'all to work with us, and, you know, if it takes a separate meeting with some of us, we, we would like to do better with y'all. We would like to follow direction, and we would like to build that community up. So, anyway, thank you.
Relative to the anonymity, I'll only speak to, if you send an email to a public address, like mine.
Yeah.
It's, it is subject to open records.
Okay.
So, that, so again, I think that's when cities, city's not gonna publish your name and, or run and tell a neighbor that you did something, but to say, well, we're gonna be 100% anonymous.
Sure.
There are limitations to that, and I don't know how that relates to law enforcement and activities there.
Well, law enforcement's supposed to recognize it.
I think there's some exceptions for that, but again, just relative to that, that's...
Yeah. Well, and honestly, we would like to, you know, then I guess maybe we should make phone calls because oftentimes, we've had residents actually say, those people got evicted because of y'all. No, they didn't. They got evicted for something totally different, and why these people are pointing fingers at us, I think is a little suspect. So, yeah, we don't want people to be angry at us and come after us. So, thanks.
Thank you.
I'm Ryan Roney from 22 Akron Street, also in Atco. But I wanted to add first, Mr. Mayor, thank you for the Public Works and you responding to my request to improve the road markings, the stop signs on the one-ways. They used to have just markings halfway across, and now they're fully across. I sent in some pictures, and that got improved, so thank you. And that's...
That was either Public Works or the police department, that wouldn't be, but I'll take credit.
No, but I talked with you about it.
I know, I'm glad it got handled.
So, yeah, who, but that got taken care of, and, but, and I've noticed fewer issues of the wrong-way drivers on my street after that change happened. There are other areas that still need to be looked at with the traffic flow in Atco, in particular, that Parmenter and Goodyear intersection. Not only the boat that's been talked at length on, on that same street, there's a lot of people parking on the grass on the no-parking side, where they're on the grass and the sidewalk, also blocking the view of that intersection. So it's an entire, it's a full intersection that needs to figure out a better way of flow and a better regulation so that it's safe. Because especially during the week, I see children with the church group there, and there's a lot of blind corners now coming into that. So, but just continuing with my comments, my family was excited to see the remodel of the Atco Clubhouse. We enjoy the view as we come into the neighborhood. It's a much better view when you turn in. So, thank you all for that. And some of those, those, so, they are part of a growing group in the neighborhood that are working to be, on the neighborhood, and we're becoming friends through this process. We help each other, deal with issues we're having with our own homes, and with neighbors who might not have the same vision that we all have for the neighborhood. So, we really are transitioning from that literal meaning of the word neighbor as just people who merely live near each other, if you look at the old German, but actually the spirit of that word. The goals of further improvement and collecting raising of standards to code is sometimes hindered by a perceived disrespect as we work with code, and we, I will send more to you in an email. I'm not gonna go to the specifics based on your comments earlier. And sometimes, someone's truthfulness and perceived vindictiveness, and this is our perception. If that can be corrected, we want to have that perception corrected. But sometimes, but collectively, after individually having experiences with, with code, we get together and we talk. We hear the things they say. When, when a, when a, when one person, when one person hears from a code enforcer that they think Atco should have had everything torn down 20 years ago, we perceive some disrespect on houses that we are very proud to have in our neighborhood. We're proud to be a part of improving. You know, my own mother, when I first moved to the neighborhood four years ago, she, she scoffed at the neighborhood. But in the last four years, she pulled in just recently, and she's amazed at all the work that everyone is doing, and that's a collective. It's both individual homeowners and also the city doing things in that neighborhood. So, again, we're all working on this, but we're just really looking to work respectfully and honestly with the cooperation of the city, and there are some challenges that we're having, and we want to actually get those further addressed.
Okay. Thank you.
Can I, sir, can I get you to repeat your name?
Ryan Roney, R-O-N-E-Y.
And your address?
22 Akron.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? There are no other business forward? Anybody else wish to come forward and address Council? Seeing none?
I'd like to say one thing.
Go right ahead.
I think tonight has been very nice to see all these faces. We've had a lot of time to listen to a lot of the community speak tonight. It's good for us. But I do want to say some very positive things about our city. City of Cartersville, including our school systems, the county and the county school systems, we are exceptional. If you go outside of our city and outside of our county, you will see a far different area, you see far different people. So although we may not all do everything right all the time, we are here, and we care, we're local, and you can always find us. That's not the normal. So I do hear you, I think we all hear you, but I want you to be proud of where you live because I'm certainly proud to serve.
And just another, just case in point of the work that y'all are doing and the city is doing, and I'm sure the police chief appreciates this aspect of it, back in 2020, calls for police services in Atco were 621. Last year is 524, and so far this year, it's sitting at 326. So, again, trending in the right direction and trying to make that place even better than it already is. It is certainly a diamond, and we're just looking to polish it along with you. Okay?
I, I, yeah, I'm sitting up here throughout the meeting. I would like to, to want to echo Councilman Hodges' words. I have two daughters in our school system, and I know that's been a subject tonight, but they are afforded things that I was not afforded where, where I grew up in my life, and I'm grateful for them. They're both be on the sidelines of the football game Friday night this year, and I'm super excited about that. And I'm super excited about what's happening in our, in our city. I agree with Ms. Hodges, that, Councilwoman Hodges, that you go outside of here, I mean, we can look at the graphs, we can look at the tax rates and how high they are, and what the outcome is of that. And I agree, you know, we are always working, one thing that, we are always working to lower those and broaden that base. One thing that you have to keep in mind, that when we look at our community as a whole, is that education, when industry comes in here, they're looking at our educators, they're looking at our schools. We want industry to come in because it broadens the tax base and keeps our, our taxes lower, but one of the big, big keys to that is, is our education system. And so, we're continuing to work on that. We're continuing to progress, and I appreciate the work that our school has done. My children, and I know several up here, they're children are products of that, and so I, I, I agree with Ms. Hodges. We are listening, we will hear those things, and we will continue to work on it.
As a side note, when those large community industries do come, they, we do not abate school taxes, and we haven't for years. There's certainly instances with existing industries where we've done it on very rare occasion, but it's not like we're excusing those folks. And again, I'll echo your sentiments. We're up here to serve y'all, and so I'm very appreciative. Our community is a great place to be because people care about making it a better place and work to hold us accountable, and so we appreciate that input. It only makes us better. Anybody else? Chair, I want to take a motion.
So move.
There. They go. There you go. Point. Okay. I suppose I'm...